I'm going to call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, October 25th at 7 o'clock. I'll remind people out there that we have one of the members is on the phone, Bob Jarvis, so we'll be doing roll call votes and we'll take in, get to that as we move. So, for the agenda approval, oh, first I should remind everybody to make sure they turn off all their electronic devices, the phones and laptops and the rest. Then, agenda approval, public comments, Google the Minutes, warrants, mail, town administrator report, budget adjustment, resignation letter, school board request, unicorn management access agreement modification, health insurance, economic development, search for federal or state inspection of hydro dam, meetings on budget, budget report, listers recommendation going forward, an assessor list proposal, town hall updates, B-Trans traffic study, gravel road speed reduction process being reviewed, personnel records, transfer station worker job description, municipal road grants, and aid, travel policy, and to-do lists. There is nothing on the new business tonight, and on the old business is the auditor letter from the town attorney. Get a motion approved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further thing to be added or discussed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Jenny, aye.
Yeah, I have to, by name.
Jenny, aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And aye from Nelson. So, it's such unanimous. Okay, public comments, anybody here for public comment today? Did you guys wanted to go on to public comment, or do you want to wait and be on the agenda where we have you for school board request?
You want to take us first? We'll go ahead.
That's up to the board.
Save you some time.
Sure. Okay, there we go. Come on down, Angie. This is support staff.
Bob, we have two members in the school board here, Angie Rowley's and Cindy Brownell, and they're here to talk about some of the items that the school currently own, that they're looking to see what the town would wish to do. Go ahead.
Okay. In case you don't know, the state is coming up with this Act 46, it's a consolidation of schools. It looks like it's probably 98% going to join, probably the elementaries. What happens is, once they do consolidate, any property each town has, the school property, will become property of this board.
The joint.
The joint board. So, we're asking, we have two pieces, we have a ball field down in North Pownell, where the North Pownell School used to be. The children of this town have used it for, since the school was taken down. We're asking the town to, we'd like to turn it over to the town. The town mows it now, the children use it for ball, for sports.
Little league.
And we really want to see that remain in that area.
And ownership of the town?
Under the ownership of the town. Now, we've been, the school board has been to the attorney, he's working on a paper, and what I want, actually wanted to say is that it remain a ball field for the town, not ever to be sold.
Could it be a recreational field, word it that way, versus a ball field for the town? Just in case they want to do more than just a ball field there.
As long as it's for Pownell children.
Yes, we don't care what you call it.
Well, just the legal document, once they draw them up and want to make sure.
Okay. Uh, the second thing is, the state made us give up our buses.
Can we take one at a time?
Sure.
Let's talk about the ball field first.
Okay.
That it's easier to do it that way than if the board moves, we can move on one and the other. What's your thoughts on this, Ronnie? Do you think it's something we should do?
My thoughts are, it's been used right along by not only the children. I mean, I played ball there until I was 50, on Sundays. So, I mean, grownups go there too when the kids aren't playing, on a Sunday and Saturday. Sometime they have tournaments.
Yeah.
I think it should stay with the town.
It should stay with the town, stay with Connel.
Because the town has been using it.
We don't want it to be transferred to somebody else.
Like I say, not only the children, the children.
That's the whole issue.
We've had soccer down there before, and they got, they played the baseball, and they've, also, they practice there, the kids do. And like I say, the grownups played there for years, used to have a Sunday game.
That's fine, we just don't want it to go out of Connel.
No, it should stay with the residents of home.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, I agree.
Jenny?
It's also been used by, I think it's Faith Church that did the movies there, didn't they do the outdoor movies at the ball field?
Yes, yes.
So, it's used, it's used by adults and kids in other ways besides, besides ball, so I think recreation is the way to word it.
Right, I agree.
But I definitely think the town should acquire it.
I support it, and I think, I think, again, I think, yeah, you gotta be careful that we don't, you know, just for baseball, I think we'd want to have it for recreational, but I think, I think it'd be nice too to have some, to have maybe, you know, our recreation committee, maybe be involved in a little bit. And really, there are people that, you know.
Yep.
We don't really have a town recreation committee though, do we?
We do.
I thought that was disbanded.
I don't think, we've appointed one in a long time, we used to have one years ago, but it's like, we used to have an economic committee years ago. I think if we're going to do that, I think it's appropriate, and it's nice to have something like that, that they can actually build on.
That's right.
So, I agree with that. Bob, do you have anything to say on this?
Um, well, I'm in agreement that we ought to keep that in the, we ought to keep that in the town, but I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Okay, so with that said, I would take a motion from the board to tell the school to move forward with changing the ownership to us.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry, so let's do it by roll call. Ronnie said aye. Jason?
Aye.
Jenny? Bob?
Aye.
And now I'll say aye. Nelson, so, okay, so it was unanimous. Okay, moving on to the next topic.
Thank you, on behalf of the school, we really feel better about that.
Really, really.
Okay, the other issue is our buses. We have a total of five, three of which are going to be sold. They're going to be, Joel is our maintenance gentleman, he's going to sell the three, we're keeping two of the newer buses. And we're keeping them because we don't want to go in and tell the children, you cannot do field trips. So, we've been using these two buses for field trips right along, and I really don't want to lose them again, like with the ball field. So, I'm asking the town if they would take ownership of these two buses. We, we'd like to still use them for field trips. Joel is our, Burlington is our maintenance guy, I spoke to him and he would continue maintain, keep them, keep them up, and...
And we're willing to keep that in our budget to maintain them as long as...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you're...
I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, once you're a joint board, what's going to happen is, that full board has to have...
Are they going to charge us for these?
Here's, here's, I think the thing, there's a couple ways to go about this. One is, is for us, as a board, to recommend a vote of the town that we take them, because I think the vote of the town is safe for us to keep the buses.
Right, because you pay them.
Okay, but then it's the people out there, if the board agrees, it's what they want to do. Then I think there's going to have to be some sort of budget line, even though, what I'm hearing is that the school does many more field trips when it owns its own bus and having to rely on someone else from outside to come and go.
Right.
So, it makes it...
And it's not just the Pownell School, the Oak Hill also uses that as well.
Okay, so basically, what you're looking at is, is how do, how do we manage those when the time comes, if the town tells us, it might become part of our fleet, means insurance, it means fuel, a bunch of stuff that, I know you have it in your budget now, but what would happen is, we would then have to let the people know what the cost of that would be? The cost you have now, is you, is it just strictly for field, field?
No, it's insurance, fuel, and oil, and bus maintenance, and this is roughly two buses, it's about $8,000.
A year.
A year.
And what, who pays for the driver? Who, actually, who drives them?
Uh, we, we have...
Diana Cummings.
Diana Cummings has been our driver.
Okay.
Right along, and...
And we have the Burlington boys, if she can't do it, they will do it.
Well, they work for the town.
Oh, they can do it.
We haven't been in that situation.
Right.
And I know sometimes Woodford, Woodford...
Wants to use your buses.
Uses them for field trips.
So, what happens, well, again, I, I'm, I understand what you're trying to do, and I think it's appropriate, I just think that when it comes to buses and the, and the way we want to use them, it might be wiser for the town to do that. Bob, do you have any comments on this?
I don't.
Can I make a comment? I, I've worked as a teacher in the past, and I've oftentimes not been able to take kids on really good field trips, because the buses are so expensive. So, I would, I think it's great to hold on to them if you can.
From a transactional standpoint, you want to, you say turn over the buses to the town.
To the buses.
To the buses, they're yours.
Yes.
No, no monetary transfer, or you could do it for a dollar.
Yeah, you'd probably have to, whatever the legal process, we'd have to do it.
Think you do have to do it for dollars.
But, but that's, that's, that's what would happen, and then it would become part of our fleet. Ronnie, what do you think?
Do we have enough field trips to warrant having these buses?
Absolutely.
As long as we have the buses.
Yes.
This is my point, we have the buses already, the two, and I guess they're in pretty good shape.
They are.
But, when it comes to replacing them, we have to replace them. Is the town willing to, the townspeople willing to step up out of play to buy buses for field trips? Or would it be more practical for us to, to rent, or how else they do it, other places? Whether or not you're going to have a field trip, we hire somebody, New Fore or somebody, I don't know who to hire.
The problem is with New Fore, there's only so many buses, and they have all the runs, and they have to be backed by a certain time, so that limits the chance to use a bus to go on a field trip.
Or they dictate to you when you can leave and when you can come back.
Right.
And it's usually not feasible.
Well, the only point I'm trying to make is, is, you know, this budget keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and if we, if you're going to buy buses, buses are expensive items. Right now, all right, fine, they divest to us, we already bought them, they were in our bus sinking fund and stuff, but as far as adding that on to another expense of the town, it ain't up to me to decide. If the town feels that that's the, that's the thing to do, I think it should be put on a ballot.
That's what I'm saying, it should be...
If you want to maintain a bus or two, do we need two? Or can we get by with one? I mean, how many field, how many kids, how many field trips? These questions will be asked, not only by me, but other citizens will ask the same questions.
Are we, if we take on these two, it's 8,000 for the both of them, is that what you're saying?
That's for service.
But, right, but are we obligated to replace if a bus breaks down? I don't know that we have to make that obligation if we take on these buses.
Well, you have to make a determination.
When the buses are done, we're done.
Then we have, well, yeah, then we have to figure out another solution.
That's right.
I'm just asking.
How, how new are the buses you're talking about?
I don't remember.
You just bought one, right, with some grants, not that long ago?
Yes.
But did you buy two with them?
Two of them.
Those are the two newest?
And what, what the deal was with the state, we bought one and they gave, we were allowed to buy the second one, both of them at half price, as long as we got rid of one of our older ones.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we didn't have that much, and...
Yeah, efficiency.
I know prices are going up, but...
So, there could be grants to replace.
That's the thing, I don't know where the money comes from, I mean, it's, before, we were just, we had a bus sinking fund for our school buses.
Yep.
Yep.
When we were separate from this coalition, this great thing that they're putting us through. That, and I could understand that, and here we budgeted for that, and that was the school thing, but I mean, do we really, I mean, if it warrants it, and the people want it, but it ain't up to me. I'm not going to decide.
But if the Act 46 and the merge goes through, then the buses could go to Bennington, and that would be the end of it.
Yeah, they'd probably auction them off.
But is this going to happen before March? Because if you're saying a vote, then we can't put it on the November ballot, we'd have to wait till the March ballot.
Supposedly sometime in November.
They can make, they're going to make a decision, but the time when it actually rolls in and becomes effective, I think it's a year out, I think it's...
Then we have time to get it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's June of 2019 is when it's there, so July 1st, 2019.
Yeah, so I think we'll be fine.
So, I agree.
I, I, I agree, and taking ownership, I think it's a good idea, but I think, like Ronnie said, I think people are going to want to know what's it going to cost to keep these for the year, and probably have a clear understanding of, you know, who's going to drive them, and, you know, what it's going to cost to pay them. Is the school going to pay for the driver, are we going to pay the driver? I mean, I think those are questions we need to answer, you know. Obviously, there's, there's other involvements in having CDL drivers, you know, can they follow under our plan for our dri, you know, I think we need to answer these questions.
Yeah, I, I think...
It's going to be researched a little more before we make a decision.
I agree.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think, well, I think we can make a decision to have it run in March, but we need the answer for the March vote.
Right.
So, if we feel as comfortable in saying that it'll go on the March ballot, but they're going to have to describe what all the questions will be, or have, so they can do the answers.
Potential questions, right.
Yeah, then, then I think that it's a reasonable approach, because, come on, we haven't wrote the ballot yet or anything else, something happens between now and March, we won't be running it, but this gives the people out there something if we feel it's the appropriate thing to do if the right information comes back.
If you could email me your concerns, and then I can work on, with central office, the answers, that your concerns, your questions, appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we'll want to know how many field trips you're talking a year, I would say, and that includes the other two schools you talked about using them, what's that mean in the way of mileage? There's, there's a whole bunch of stuff, you must have some averages, some mileage of what you've done over the last year, and that's sort of, because really, let's face it, these buses have only been used for field trips over the last year because you've really been under contract.
Yeah.
So, it's got to be some, so, so, so more likely Joel will have mileage records somewhere of what occurred on those.
He keeps them maintained.
Yeah.
You know, the batteries and, keeps them inspected.
Yeah.
Field trips, this is just a question, but, now, the field trips, are they something that the, the school is all going to be one big conglomerate? They have any, do they have input on these things, or is that something that, oh, it's going to do?
You mean when they consolidate?
Yeah, after they consolidate. What about the field trips then? Who decides on these field trips?
They have buses through New Forests, yeah.
Usually it's the...
See, that's the things, questions that I got.
The present town, New Forest does not do our, our field trips.
I think what Ronnie's asking is the question, I just, through our board the other night, approved field trips, and we approve trips that go overseas, if the German club's going to stop, but the board does those approvals, and that's the question, I think he's asking, who, who actually says you can take that field trip if you plan to have one? I have never heard a board saying no to one of them.
Right.
Ever.
We never have.
But, but just, that's a question.
The teachers put in a request.
So, in other words, hypothetically...
A request from the school, rather than from the town, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, so hypothetically, if you do take ownership of the buses, I think what the board would have to do is come to the board and ask if...
Plus you...
First, you're going to, you're going to ask if you can do the field trip, they're going to, and you're going to explain in that that you're going to use your own, the town buses and so forth, and then they're going to make a decision, whatever this board is, whether or not you can go on a field trip, and I think, you know, as long as they're insured and the rest, I don't care what buses you use, I think what they're more worried about is, well, you're going to go on a field trip, what are the kids going to learn from the field trip? Those are the things usually a board asks.
We just had the fifth grade?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade came into our board meeting last week, and it just...
They went to Merck Forest.
They went to Merck Forest, and I'll tell you, was it Merck?
Yeah.
And they were just so elated, they were excited, they showed us...
What they learned.
What they learned, and, just, I thought to myself, if we can't let these kids do this, it just, it's not fair to the children. And that's why we're asking if, we want to keep the buses, and the only way we can, we can continue using them is if the town is able to take them over for us. Otherwise, when we consolidate, they're gone.
Well, let's...
We'll get you whatever information you need to make your decision.
Yeah, is the board in agreement to have them go away and answer any questions that we might have? We have plenty of time before we have to do a ballot article, and then, at that time, we will make our decision on whether to run a ballot article or not, based on the information we get back. Board in agreement that they should do that?
Mm-hmm.
Because they're not, from what I'm hearing is, the board isn't against this idea, it just wants more information.
Yep.
Well, I'm just curious as far as, because I know a lot of other people would be curious, you know, I mean, you're saying all the schools are pulled into one big group, and now we're going to have, I mean, are any of these other schools going to keep anything of theirs, or are they going to run private field trips?
They don't have buses, other schools.
They don't have buses, we're the only school that has buses.
All right, well, I don't mind us keeping them until they're worn out, I got no problem with that.
You guys paid for them.
And that might, and that might be...
The townspeople paid for them.
I got a problem, I got a problem with having to buy new ones, because buses are expensive, trucks are expensive, so, I mean, come on, I know they're expensive.
Yeah.
Let's, let's ask Joel how long he thinks these buses are going to last, because that's a question we, we can get an answer to, you know, what shape, how long are they going to last, you know, I don't know how bus, you were buying buses, when did you buy a new bus, every 10 years?
Every 10 years, pretty much.
Yeah, so, so you're looking at something that you're probably going to get 10 years, and if you're only using it for a very little amount of time compared to what you did when you were going all over the roads here in town, it might last you 15 to 20. So, so let's try to get Joel to give you, give us an answer, and we'll, we'll take and send you any other questions we might have.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Google the minutes at 10:11.
So moved.
You got a second? Need a second for the minutes.
I'll second.
All right. Bob, what's your vote on the minutes? Did you get a copy in the mail?
Um, I, actually, I didn't, I didn't read the minutes, so I'm going to recuse.
Okay, so you're going to abstain?
I'm staying.
I'm going to say one thing, it says Amelia's a mediator and offered to help, no, she's a mediator and suggested a mediator, she didn't, she, she did not say that she could be a mediator for us.
Okay.
I don't know if that, that is implied here. She said I couldn't, I could not be the mediator for you, I can't remember why she said, but...
Well, because she was a member of the board, she was a member of VCRD.
Oh, right, that's right, that's right.
So, she couldn't be the mediator.
Yeah, so she said she couldn't be the mediator, but she, she just suggested it, so I don't know how you might want to just re-vote that.
We could just scratch it.
Yeah.
We'll just scratch.
Just scratch, I think that's right.
All right, so, so we're amending the minutes by moving something on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that amended, anything else you've got to amend?
Well, I mean, there's some suggestions, so, sorry, hold on a second. I don't want to have a really long conversation about this, but...
Minutes are supposed to be brief.
Yeah, it's, I think that we can take out this, the 2017 VCRD sentence, because it's, it's written as a statement as opposed to a, that's an opinion. So, if you wouldn't mind, so I think we should just take that statement out. Other than that, I'm fine with it.
Do you want to take the conflict in Pownell out too?
Yes, that's also an opinion.
Wasn't mine.
I'm, it's, I'm not, I'm not, it's not, it's not a criticism at all, it just reads to me like an opinion, like, it just, you know, I think we have to be careful about it just saying what happened as opposed to anybody's. And that opinion happens to be mine, so...
All right, with those changes, all those in favor say aye.
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 You're abstaining, right, Bob?
That's correct.
Okay. Moving on. Okay, I'm going to dive in my agenda.
Words.
Okay, warrants. Payroll report ending 10/19/18 in the amount of $8,513.30. Payroll reporting in 10/26/18 in the amount of $9,247.40. Counts payable ending 10/19/18 in the amount of $105,077.32, of which, if I remember correctly, there's a bond payment of $82,641, which made up the majority of that. Okay. Counts payable ending 10/26/18 in the amount of $71,518. And the big one on this, was $35,000 for sand and gravel, $35,573.25.
Sand, all right, sand.
Says sand and gravel company, I don't know what, did we just buy sand?
We did, yeah.
Okay. Okay, what's your guys?
I have to put...
Give me a second.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Bob, what's your vote?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Ronnie? Vote, aye or nay?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Nelson's going aye.
Jenny, aye.
Yeah, the rules say that we're supposed to do a roll call vote. Ayes have it, okay. I think so, the warrants. Mail?
Good Mr. Chair, I have, the first bit of mail is from Ms. Rose Marie Pelletier. Friends of Pownell want to thank the select board for its support for the October 11th meeting, in providing insurance for the candidate forum. While they, they appreciate that, they, they're only going to have one-third of the candidates, so they're going to, they're going to decide not to host it, so that will not be, be done. I have a overweight permit, excessive weight permit by Bruce White Logging Incorporated, request approval, was approved by the highway foreman.
What's the board's pleasure?
Approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Jenny, aye.
Jason, aye.
Ron, aye.
Nelson, aye.
Bob, aye. Bob, aye.
Got you, Bob. Thanks.
And, we have the draft minutes of the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance, it reflects the report that I gave to you, after having read that entire report, but this will be[1635.13] But this would be for your reading. If you wanna catch up on that, that summarizes. Letter from Passive or Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. They came down, they lost control of services and programs came down at my request, developing a, developing a safety program. And they reviewed claims against, and year-to-date, two thousand eighteen claims, our property schedule. We talked about safety grant and scholarship programs, workers' compensation, best practices. And you approved me to work with Southern Vermont Medical Center to get us a designated occupational health provider. We'll be doing that, I believe, next week. And working on establishing a transitional return-to-work program. In other words, for that at light duty, someone who understands themselves. They've downloaded a bunch of information for me, best practices for a safety plan and a safety committee that will lower our insurance. That'll take some time, but we plan to work on that. And that is all for the mail.
Thank you. Your report? Could we move up? You're here for the audit?
For the, no, I'm here for the budget adjustment.
Okay, could we move up and then she?
Yeah, I was gonna bring up the, go ahead, you do it.
Beautiful.
I've been called last.
Okay, so what I'm doing is, Michael and I are through, through this year, we're going to try to make adjustments where we can as needed, so we have a better handle on where we stand. Instead of waiting until June and coming with a great big list of adjustments, I'm doing them a little ahead of time. The reason why we're doing these is because with the raises and we put a couple new lines in, so they didn't have any money, this money's gonna be coming out of the contingency expense line, like I always do. It's just they're happening a little sooner. So, what I gave you is a list. It's the different wage lines. The office alarm system that we put in didn't have a budget line, because we didn't know that at the time. And the county tax was a little bit more than it was supposed to be. And the Nemrick Contract Service is basically the people that are helping harvesters. Then, yeah, they're helping the new people with some of their stuff. So, from the general expense lines from the contingency fund, I'm gonna move thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars into those other lines to cover the raises and anything that didn't have a line, and it's all broke down separately there.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, absolutely.
Information Technology Line, six thousand.
That, that's where our IT guy is getting paid out of, so we can track what we're paying him instead of having him lumped into all the phone work and everything. So, there wasn't a line to take that. So, we're just taking it from the contingency now. He was kind of lumped in with something else, so something else will probably, right, building. So, something else, so building maintenance may be underspent this year, so then we can use that to cover some other expense line in the future. But I didn't wanna play swap money from expense line to expense line right now. We're only, you know, a quarter or a third of the way through the year, so.
Okay.
So, that's for the general fund, except for, we'll do that part for, yes, yes.
Okay. Get a motion to basically move from the contingency to the line out of this described to us by our treasurer, the thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the contingency to cover.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Jason, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay.
Moving on to the next one.
The next set is the, so our Recreation Department, and this has to do with the summer program at the Powell School. So, alls I'm doing is, all the wages are coming out of the transportation wage line now, instead of separating the bus line, the bus expense for, you know, picking up our children in the summer. So, I'm just moving that, so it just, it takes it out of one expense line into the other. It's not affecting the bottom line of the contingency or anything.
So, it just shows a clearer example?
It shows exactly the wages that are being spent for the Recreation Program, instead of separating it out, because we just don't do that now. There's no need to, so we're gonna make that line go away. I can't get rid of it for a couple of years, but that line will budget zero in, and it will all be budgeted under the...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the change.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Jenny, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Jason, aye.
Aye.
Ronnie's aye. Bob?
Aye.
Aye, Nelson, okay. Moving on to the road.
So, in the road, the same thing. It's to cover wages of the engineering expense. That's a new line that we put in to track. It has to do with grants. We had to hire, and so we're tracking it cleaner, so that we can show the state or wherever. The Road Foreman.
So, this is like the engineer he hired to do with the culverts and things?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then the rest of it is wages also. It's just broken out the sick time, vacation time, holiday time. It all comes part of the wages. And so, it would come from the contingency, and it would be twenty-eight thousand dollars.
What's your pleasure?
Move to approve that one also.
Second.
Any discussion? Ron, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jenny?
Jenny, aye.
Nelson, aye. Bob?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just so, I mean, it doesn't change the bottom line, just so that you know. Alls we're doing is just making it so now you know you have this much money and you're content, so you can't say, oh, we can cover something, 'cause it's gone. 'Cause we've already moved the money. That's what it's for.
And your assistant agrees that this is the...
Yes, I talked to her before we came in, so she's approved.
Next mail. I was asked to read a resignation letter. Respectfully, this is from Ms. Shannon Barsati. She states, "The recent controversy over municipal planning grant really was the last straw for me. After some reflection, decided to leave the Planning Commission. Despite the discussions of last Planning Commission meeting, I don't trust this won't happen again until we have a Planning Commission and Select Board members openly, while we have Planning Commission and Select Board members openly against Discover Powell. That said, she will lend a helping hand if the Planning Commission needs a community partner in the future. She respectfully submits her resignation from the Powell Planning Commission. She thanks the Select Board for the opportunity to serve. She admires all the people who volunteer the time and talents on our town vote, and I've enjoyed working with my fellow members of the Planning Commission. I'm proud of the work we've done to complete the new Powell Town Plan and Village Designations, and I look forward to continuing work on local community and economic development with Discover Powell. I believe that welcoming new leaders from a variety of backgrounds makes our town stronger and better prepared for the future. Vermont and Powell both have to work on attracting more young people, like myself, to move back to our great state and our beautiful town. When town officials say they wanna take back Powell from outsiders, it sends a message that new people and new ideas are not welcome. This message hurts Powell and deepens the divide that exists between socioeconomic classes and the old and new Powell. It's time to move past the vice of Frederick and work together to strengthen our community, take care of each other, and welcome new neighbors. I recommend, with regret, accepting the resignation of Shannon Barsati."
Get a motion to do so?
I'd make a motion to, with great regret and sorrow, to accept Shannon's resignation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Jenny, aye.
We got, yeah, Jenny, aye.
Jason, aye.
Aye.
Ronnie's an aye, I'm an aye. Bob?
Bob, aye.
Okay. That means we got an open position.
Correct. I've already posted it on the website. And I copied Mike's letter. We have an addendum, the right of entry. I call this the addendum to the addendum to the addendum. They've been working with Darcy to find a place to drill. This is Unicorn, UPU, beg your pardon. They're going to be drilling Cedar Hill Road in Vermont three forty-six, and there's diagram if you so choose to. And this'll require a vote and signature from the board, just by the chair.
Is Darcy okay with this?
Yes, they went out, her and Joel went out with them, and selected the spot, and they've agreed upon it.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Jenny, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Jason, aye.
Ronnie?
Aye.
This is on PFOA testing.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay. And your comment was this on PFOA testing?
I believe so.
Yes, it is.
Okay, and Nelson's an aye.
Next is economic, or beg your pardon, health insurance. I've been looking at health insurance. I have meetings with both Blue Cross and MVP. And while I could be the hero and get ten percent less for the town for doing another company for our insurance, I wanna make sure that they're gonna provide us the same level of service comparable to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, I'm looking into that pretty deeply. I wanna consider vision in dental, but if the budget doesn't permit that, I won't be doing that. Economic Development Committee, it's gonna meet on November fourteenth at six PM. We'll be warning yet. There's an agenda written.
Gonna meet here?
Yes, at Town Hall.
What's the date, Michael? What's the date?
Oh, November fourteenth at six PM. Adam Podolski, John Giante, and Karen Golis. Trying to shore up the inspection or the insurance with Passive. Been working with them and the Hydro Dam to find out, A, do they have a current inspection report, and B, how the lease between the town and them are written. Them are written. That, I should have that fairly quickly, so we can conclude and get our passive insurance.
And that's liability for the town?
Yes. Yeah, I wanna make sure we're dialed in on that, that we're not missing anything. Budget and budget report.
Bob, just speak up if you wanna speak into something, so I can hear you. Okay?
I will.
We have begun. Back on the fifteenth, we started nineteen slash twenty fiscal year budget, and we're making pretty good progress. Met with Transfer Station, Linda and I did admin, and we're gonna be meeting with Highway next week. As far as the budget itself, we are, again, within small percentages, up or down. Roughly, everything I calculated, calculated out for fifty-two weeks, and we're doing very well. Everybody's watching their budget lines, and we talk about everything before we do it, and we're working hard.
Listers' recommendation?
Listers. I had reported to you on a couple occasions about concerns for how we did, when we had listers. And I was going to come to you and seek permission to do something different, i.e., have a part-time assessor with a part-time lister clerk. And I have to commend our listers, because they worked with Nemrick and addressed the concerns that I had, and they requested of me. And I, actually, I concur and suggest that we retain the use of three listers that are voted for. My concerns were that, sitting in the office, Linda can attest to, we get a lot of telephone calls there for the listers, and they're not here. That's not because they're bad people, it's just because they're part-time, they're elected. And they had been struggling to catch up on issues and learning of systems, and they've been phenomenal. So, Nemrick came down, helped them out, got them back to speed, and they made a decision on how they're gonna staff the office, so they balanced their time. They better take care of the customers, and they asked, and I suggest and recommend, that we do the same thing we've been doing for the next year, and we'll evaluate it at the end of the year. I hope you approve of that. They're doing a great job. They're working very hard. Town Hall update. We have on my desk for you to review elevation plans and floor plans for Hoskot Builders and the Historical Society for you to review. William Scotsman is a company that does modular buildings. They're gonna be bidding. They don't have a drawing yet. And Line Sync will be coming in tomorrow, Monday or tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Line Sync will be coming in tomorrow, and working with staff on their preference for flow, and they'll be providing a diagram. I've already got a draft RFP written. I've gotta go through and just clean that up. Once you all review that and decide the direction, physical structure of the building and the cost of the building, I suggest that we issue the RFP, and all those folks can bid on it, and we can go from there. Unless you have any questions or wish to do something differently.
I think we're fine, and it sounds like it's gonna, none of that's gonna be prepared until after the vote on November sixth. So, I think, I think we're fine.
Perfect.
And you're talking about four different groups from what I've drawn them, right?
Correct. I don't know who we get, if we got somebody after we put the RFP out, that's possible too.
So, that's another modular company that's gonna have a separate?
Yeah, William Scotsman is a company. They do containers, they do temporary office buildings, they do permanent office and municipal buildings. And in fact, they were the folks that I made the recommendation for putting up a temporary Town Hall. And of course, it wasn't cost-effective to do that, so they'll be putting one in.
V-Trans.
V-Trans.
One thing.
Yes.
I thought we had another outfit, another thing we were looking at. That one you threw out?
Which one?
Roost?
Oh, the roost. No, that's not thrown out. That's still on the table. I beg your pardon.
Yeah, you didn't say it.
I didn't say it, but the roost was still on the table.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, thank you for that. I appreciate it, 'cause it wasn't a new building per se. I just, it slipped my mind, but that's still up to you folks.
We don't need drawings for that one.
In a way, you kinda do, if you're ready to do it.
He's supposed to be doing chap, and he's supposed to be giving us some sort of...
Oh, is he? Okay.
Yeah, we need to go in and explain to him. We need to go in and explain the flow, how we wanna design. And I did price out a vault for there too.
Okay. Thanks, Ron.
Hey, I did wanna ask a question also. On the, for people at home, this is Bob. I do, while we're on the Town Hall, unfortunately, I was out and I couldn't attend. Was anybody able to attend the informational meeting on the twenty-third, and did we get any more information about the Powell Historical Society's proposal out there?
No, I went to the candidate's forum.
I wasn't able to make it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was at the candidate forum, of course. Ron, did you make it?
No, I didn't. I was on a job.
It's on YouTube, though.
It's on YouTube, which I watched.
It's filmed, that's good.
Some of it on YouTube, and I read the article in the paper.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I read the article in the paper, and I actually had stopped up and saw Joyce held before she held that, because I had to go to the debate, and we had, I think, a very good discussion on it, actually. So, that's where I made my comments and did some discussion with her.
It was about an hour, and only a couple of people asked questions.
Okay, while the YouTube is there, though, Bob. Okay.
Okay, so that's good to know. Thank you.
V-Trans, they completed a study that began prior to my arrival. It was, we were selected by VCRC for the program. They came in to do a study, and they looked at the types of road that had critical curves. And they did that study, and they, I forgot the name of it, but essentially going around the curves, they have a device like a chronometer, pitch of the road, pitch of the road, and sight distances and so forth. And they issued a packet of proposed amendment enhancements, and it's paid for by V-Trans. And I'll leave it here, and you can take a look at it.
Has Joel?
For implementation, absolutely. Yeah, Joel and I both went through it.
We got a letter on that originally. They had taken some, I think, part of Barber's Pond Road and South Stream, that they felt, they had a history of accidents over the years.
And let me see if I got...
Well, I guess where I'm at is, I have no trouble looking at it, but I think Joel should look at it, and you, and you, based on what you see in there, then you should make recommendations to us to put expenditure out there if it's necessary, and it sounds like there isn't.
There isn't, no. I recommend, they'll come and put the signs up. They'll do the work.
Well, then I would say it's...
Yeah.
Take action.
Do it.
Okay.
They did this, they did this probably five years ago for Nile School Road and Lad Road. They resigned all.
Yeah, well, we resigned.
They did North Powell Road, too.
Before that.
It's a pretty thorough document.
There was quite a few roads that actually, and that's when Casey was here, that they went around, and they did a whole bunch of signage and stuff. And I don't know if it was that study or a different one, but I would say Joel should look it over, and if there's some things there, he should come in and we'll just do it, especially if it doesn't cost anything. There are some pretty bad curves and blind turns out there on some of those dirt roads. It would be nice to have a sign.
You're talking, I mean, they mentioned blacktop roads, but them dirt roads, like Lad Road, that's horrendous.
Yeah.
That's a horrendous road.
It'd be nice to, you know...
But we can't have a speed limit for every corner. That's my point. If you're gonna take, if you're gonna take a road like Lad Road, we'll do the whole road, whatever it is, at least, you know?
Northern Powell is really bad, though. Those curves, my driveways. I take my life into my hands every time I pull out of my driveway.
They've got one up around the corner that says, "I got a driveway." Somebody coming around the corner.
Yeah, I finally got a hidden driveway sign put up, but...
All right, but Bob, any comments on that?
Have we considered straightening out all the roads in Powell?
Yes.
I don't, no comment.
Thank you, Bob.
Next item, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Next item is personnel records. Want to report that Linda's near completion on redoing completely all of our personnel records. What we lack is some of the policies and job descriptions that need to be signed by employees. She wants to get them back and do that all at one time, so she's done a phenomenal job with that. I asked for a look at a transfer station operator job description. This is the last of the job descriptions that needs to be done. I believe I sent it to you. You have the option of approving it tonight or taking a look at it and changing it.
What has been Tom's comment, or the workers over there?
Yeah, he had some comment, basically on the level of expertise I wanted for computer use. And I agree with him, and I toned it down to working knowledge of computers and Microsoft products, rather than...
Specific type?
Specific, yeah, different applications.
Okay.
So...
What's your pleasure, guys?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask a quick question? This is the final output, right? The one that, the one that you sent to me? And this is, and this is Tom agreeing with this, right?
Yes, he did.
After the discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
If you pass out and sign it.
Any other discussion? Got a motion, I had a second. Okay, Ronnie, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jason says aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nelson, aye. Bob?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for the work on that. Congratulations for finishing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Municipal roads grant, Nate, Bennington County Regional Commission, we've, Joel, uh, from, uh, Highway Foreman at, received a $20,000 grant for work on Carpenter Hill. Our match is $4,000 and that will be in kind. That'll be in kind work. To elaborate a little bit, uh, the state wants us, wants every hydrologically connected road in the state by 2019 to be 15, 20% completed. You're not going to believe how many we got done. We have 78% of our roads meet state standards. That's our Highway Department. I can't say enough about them. Uh, he pulled up a screen, showed me, uh, if you're not familiar, the roads have to be banked a certain way. They have, because, uh, the runoff creates phosphorus and nitrogen outflows into the streams. And these guys are on top of it. And if you go out and see some of their work, it's darn near surgical how they put those culverts together and you got to be awful proud of those guys.
Yep. Yay, thank you, Joel.
We have a travel, uh, policy, Town of Paul, travel policy. This codifies when someone goes out to a class, uh, goes to a seminar, that, uh, they get specific amount of mileage based on the federal rate. They have, uh, per dam for food and, uh, hotel charges. And we set level at, um, airline ticket maximum 1,500 for round trip. I don't know if anybody's that, done that in a while. Breakfast, lunch, and dinner costs that can be, uh, filled out. We have a, um, a voucher for the employee to fill out that we, we have a record of it. I just got some feedback prior to the meeting. That will be included in that and you want to elaborate on that if you.
Yeah, what, uh, the feedback was basically is that we have a large number of people that actually do mileage, whether it's posting, uh, warnings or going to bank or going to check property, uh, whether it be the health officer, dog officer, zoning administrator. So there's a lot of mileage that is done different than this, uh, what I would call training mileage, where people are going out for training or, or seminars. So somehow we have to put in there that basically, uh, town employees performing, uh, town duties, while performing, uh, town duties, uh, will, uh, get paid at the federal rate for miles traveled to perform those duties, something to that nature.
And we'll be, I, we drafted something on the fly here that, uh, we think will work. We'll come back with that amendment, uh, for your approval.
Question, is it, is it a large increase from what it's been?
We don't have one.
Standard. The federal standard.
We went by 54 cents or something.
Yeah. So what we have, what we're paying right now and, and what the federal? Yes, it is, it is. It's the same. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that was the other suggestion I made, actually, where the policy was that it says federal standard. And then what we do is when we have timesheets, people make out in the forms, it will have what that rate is at current time so they'll know what the rate is if, if they do the